I will call this annual meeting of town council to order, and this is January 3, 2023, at 12:00 p.m. First order of business is swearing in of the councils reelected.
Yes, it is. So we need to swear in our reelected, and I'll come right around to you, too. Since you're side by side, we'll make it easy. So I'll just have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Maine.
And of the State of Maine.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter.
Of the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the Town of Winslow.
Of the Town of Winslow.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Town Councilor-at-Large.
Of Town Councilor-at-Large.
Your work's up. I'll leave these with you and have you sign those, and then pass them back to me. There's one for you, one for lady.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jeff. Before we go to roll call, I've been asked to have everybody make sure their cellphones are turned off or their ringers down so we don't have interruptions with cellphones. Lisa, roll call.
Roll call. Peter Drappo.
Here.
Dale Mactlin.
Yep.
Jerry Querian.
Here.
Ray Karen.
Here.
Joseph Gravel.
Here.
Jeff West.
Here.
Lee Trayhan.
Here.
Recite the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So our next item on the agenda is election of the chair.
I will not accept the nomination or election of chair for the coming year. That being said, I nominate Peter Drappo if he's willing to accept the nomination.
I second that.
If he's willing to accept the nomination.
I am.
Any other nominations? There being no other nominations? Lisa, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Dale Mactlin.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
No.
Ray Karen.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trayhan.
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Peter, is all yours?
Yes.
Stay right there.
No?
We'll finish this meeting.
Yeah, we get to switch it up.
Unless you want your chair.
All righty. The next item is approval of minutes. There are none at this time. Communications, there are none. Reports of committees and commissions will be at the next meeting. So our next item is public comment.
Point in time when anybody in the audience wants to talk about anything not on the agenda? Okay.
So hearing none, we shall move forward. Next item, let's see here, there is no table business, no old business, but we do have new business. It is order number 1-2023, providing for authorization for the Public Works Director to accept the proposal from Peachy Builders for the removal of the connector building between Johnny Seeds and Orion Rope. Total estimated cost is $226,393, of which the town's estimated cost would be $120,000.
So move.
Do we have any discussion on this?
Just for the chair, thank you for whoever put the estimate together and the details from the package. I appreciate it because it spelled out everything that was necessary for the completion of the project. That's all?
When?
Anybody out?
Yes. When is Peachy looking at starting this?
If only as soon as possible. We have to be disconnected by March 1st for the insurance companies regarding their Johnnys, so. I can't tell you the exact date, but.
That's close enough.
I believe maybe what they had for ongoing projects, this was kind of working in their I will ask if we can read the second reading as well.
I get a question, Paul, if you could, please. Under the general conditions, the description of dump fees by the Town of Winslow, what does that mean? They're not paying the tipping fees we are?
I would guess so. I mean, a lot of this is going to be salvaged, it's all metal, and I'm going to take care, I'm going to take the bill.
Okay.
If we can sell some of it, it's good structural steel, I don't know how much of a market there is. If nothing else, it's because I'm waiting to, probably to recycle it, and hopefully get some money for it.
Okay. But concrete and all of the debris, what happened?
Concrete, I'm assuming that Rick Laggie, there's some, is going to take care of that. But if not, there's not a whole lot of concrete coming out of there, so.
Okay.
Probably a couple truckloads, maybe a little more.
That was my only question with this contract.
Question to the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Paul, is this the last item that the town is obligated to finish up with Johnny's, with that whole building, this contract?
As far as, I know he is.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the chair, there's no further obligations. This we had to do because it was part of the purchase and sale. We had no such conditions on the portion we sold to Orion, so this should complete any obligations we have towards the industrial building.
Okay. Thank you. And FYI, I did just, before we then do mail from Peachy to the Johnnys from the show, I have heard that.
The way I understood it was the agreement was between Johnny's and the town.
Correct.
Okay. Is Johnny's going to be part of this contract as well?
They're supposed to be paying half of it.
Correct. Okay. I'm just worried about.
So they don't have to sign the contract. They have to put their half in escrow before we will allow the project to proceed.
Okay.
And Michelle has indicated, Michelle Pyle is the finance director over there. She just needs me to tell her the amount and give her the go-ahead, and she will deposit it. But we won't give them the start work order until we have that money secured.
Okay. Are they holding us harmless in this project, meaning Johnny's?
Well, there's no such stipulation in the purchase and sale agreement, and we're kind of left with what that purchase and sale agreement states. That's the only reason we're kind of agreeing to go through with this at this point with any of the town's cost. And it's been a long, hard fight to get to where we are, to even get this to less than a full removal. But, and the price has gone up astronomically with every month we've waited, so I can't answer that question for sure. I can check with Bill Lee before we sign off on the contract and make sure. But I mean, all that the purchase and sale agreement says is that we will have the corridor removed prior to the end of the Orion lease or June 1st of 2022, or, I'm sorry, July 1st of 2022, whichever comes first.
Okay.
They coincided, but of course, we couldn't get the project together at that time.
Okay. I would suggest that we ask Bill to add a paragraph or some language into this that when the project is complete, Johnny's holds us harmless going forward for anything to do with these buildings. What do you think, Paul?
Yeah, I mean, we can put it, I can reach back out the way, we have to make sure that the contract, the repair for Peachy is fairly clear.
Okay.
Because obviously, you have to go through, because I prepare the contract, the actual contract document.
Well, in that case, we have to have Johnny sign on the contract, which is different than what we were previously going with, but that's a good idea, and we can still run it through Bill.
Yeah.
I mean, somewheres, we have to have a formal contract, and Randy will be the one to prepare that for us, to prepare it in whatever form we want.
Okay.
Through the chair, if we do that, could there be a delay in removal?
Only if they were to push back on the Johnny's side, and it's their urgency to get this done, because their insurance will not cover them past the end of February with the connector in place. So that's been the whole urgency all along.
Any more discussion? Okay, let's take a vote on this.
Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Dale Mactlin.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trayhan.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Make a motion, we forego the second reading.
Okay. Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Dale Mactlin.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trayhan.
Yes.
Second reading has been waived, seven zero. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 1-2023, providing for establishing the stipend for attendance at regular council meetings for the coming fiscal year.
So move.
Discussion?
Again, what's occurring? I keep forgetting.
$50.
How much?
$15.
$15?
$15.
$50 per meeting?
Per meeting, yes.
Per meeting. I just make a motion, we keep it the same, at $50.
Have a second.
Any discussion?
None. All right. So roll call on keeping the stipend the same. Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Dale Mactlin.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trayhan.
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Motion to pass Resolution Number 1-2023 is Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Dale Mactlin.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trayhan.
Yes.
Next item is Resolution Number 2-2023, providing for setting the place and time of the regular town council meetings for the current year and for establishing a method for calling special meetings.
So move.
Second.
I would, oops. Why don't we leave it as it is? Works good, nothing.
Is that a motion, Jerry?
Yes.
If I might, through the chair, what's this section for establishing a method for calling special meetings? What's the purpose of putting that in this? Is there a, there is a procedure, right, for that?
There is. It's in the council rules. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Yeah. It's not specific, as specific as this.
Right.
In the council rules. It's more the general thing.
I generally call for it, or one of you can call for it, and we have to have three days' notice to the public.
No problem. So we're not establishing a new one, we're just verifying the old one that's in place.
Unless any of you wanted to propose changes to that.
Nope. Nope. I'm good.
You everything status quo.
All right. So any further discussion on the amendment? No. So roll call? Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Dale Mactlin.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trayhan.
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Motion to pass Resolution Number 2-2023, Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Dale Mactlin.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trayhan.
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Next up, we had discussion items. I didn't have anything listed, so we can go right to.
If I could, if it's allowable, or I think it is, just real quickly, Erica or Lenya Scott, can you give us a quick update on what's happening with the?
Public safety?
Public safety. Department.
It's bad that my brain's working better than yours at the moment.
That's not unusual.
So we had stated the 30-day, and this is in my manager's report as well, the 30-day period after your final vote expired on December 21st. The official day to start the trial is January 1st. Chief McDade has been working on talking to other public safety directors around the state, getting the pros and cons. Most of them have been pros. There is one public safety director who's not overly thrilled, but he seems to have problems with the amount of work that it takes versus just being a fire chief or a police chief. We plan to have our first public engagement meeting on January 10th at 6:00 p.m. here at the library, at which time we'll be able to present the draft of the public safety director job description and let people know what we've come up with for measuring success or failure. And keep in mind that this is a little bit harder than a lot of projects would be to measure success or failure. The measure of success or failure is really, are we maintaining services at the same level that we always have? How is staff morale, which is a soft, that's not a tangible metric, that's not a measurable metric, but if we're seeing an increased amount of grievances or turnover, that could be indicative of a problem. However, we all know change is hard, and it does take some time, so we'll just be monitoring all of that as we go. The big metric is going to be, are we continuing to answer calls in a timely and efficient manner, and are we continuing to be able to answer the same volume of calls that we answered in the past? Those are the big metrics. So today's the first business day back at work for most of us, not the chiefs, they work all the time, but we're just starting now on the trial phase of this. The meeting on the 10th is an open public meeting. Anybody can attend, including you all as council. So.
I understand.
That is at 6:00 p.m. Katie, I need a reminder that that goes out on the website and the Facebook page.
On the 10th, please.
On the 10th. It's not a televised meeting. We aren't asking Chad to come back the day after the council meeting and televise it, but it is open and welcome to all. If we have our TV screens up by then, I will put it out on Facebook Live. Otherwise, it's a little hard with one little laptop to broadcast an entire meeting on Facebook Live, but we'll do what we can.
Question? Through the chair?
Go ahead.
Erica, is there a reason why we can't do that during the meeting, the town meeting?
Because it is not intended to be a formal structure like your council meetings are.
Okay.
This is a public engagement meeting. It's completely separate from public comment, from public hearing. It is an engagement meeting where they present, we give the public the chance to interact, bring up concerns. It's more like a town hall meeting than your regular council meetings are. It's intended to be much more free-flowing and organic than the structure of a council meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Really quick, Peter, I just wanted to mention that today is Lisa's last meeting, and Lisa's been with us now for five.
Four years.
Four years. And I think I speak for everybody in the town and the public, and just what a pleasure it has been to work with you over the last years. And we wish you the best of luck in your endeavors in the future.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for everything.
Oh, I appreciate it. And can I just quickly say thank you to everyone? It's been a great four years. The Winslow community is so special, and I'm definitely going to miss it. I'm going to miss all of the department heads. I'm going to miss working with the council. I'm going to miss working with Erica. And I want to thank Mike Hevener, who's the one that hired me four years ago and brought me on board. So it's definitely a great team here, and it's going to be, I'm going to miss it awful, but thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You'll be very sorely missed.
Yeah. It's going to be hard.
Getting back to the public safety department, is there any way on the 9th we can have some sort of a job description guideline as to what you all are thinking?
Yes.
Because I think that should come before the meeting on the 10th. I think the council should approve these job descriptions and have input for that.
Technically, by the Charter, I have the entire control over that, but not a problem. We'll get something done before then that you can look at at the meeting.
So on the 9th, we'll have our regular.
Yes.
Regular meeting.
Council meeting.
And you'll have some information for us on the meeting on the next day.
We can give you an update. We'll still give an update as far as what's at the meeting on the 9th.
Then.
And that will be the chiefs addressing you all. We can do that during communications or department reports. It's just the public engagement meeting is the 10th. And one of the things they all ask for is what the job descriptions are. The job descriptions are pretty, they're fairly basic. It's not as, it's not like a five-page job description. It's fairly cut and dry. It's an administrative position. It is not required to be either a fireman or a policeman. It is required to be an administrator. Now, in point of fact, I don't know of any public safety directors who are not either a fireman or a policeman. And it generally works out that way because of their training and credentials, but it doesn't necessarily have to be. That also means that a fire chief who moves into that position would not have to go back and get certified as a law enforcement officer, nor does a police chief who would go to that position have to go and get certified in firefighting and EMS. The position is administrative, and I think that's the big, the big thing that needs to be remembered, is we are not talking about the person at the top taking over the day-to-day operations of these departments. That still falls to the deputy chiefs, because they are the ones that are going to have the operational expertise. So that's why the job description is probably not as complicated as people are thinking it's going to be.
No, I didn't think that, but what I'm wondering is, if we're going to discuss this on the 9th, when are we going to institute the six-month trial?
It's already started as of January 1.
Oh, okay. So it's intact as we speak? Okay. I got you.
So who is, who is the interim?
Your interim public safety director is Chief McDade.
And when?
Okay.
And there's an interim?
And I'm sorry that I did not have time to do formal, I'm sorry, I didn't have capacity to do normal notifications, but that has been.
And this one?
And I'm sorry that I did not have time to do formal, I'm sorry, I didn't have capacity to do normal notifications, but that has been.
Is there also a interim deputy chief for each one now?
Police, no, there is not. And fire, our deputy chief is the interim chief, which he will, that title will stay until we're done with the trial and decide which way we're going. So as of right now, Scott Bolduc, there's no need for an additional deputy chief when Scott's already running the fire department. So Scott will continue to run the fire department.
And on the 10th, we'll have discussion on more in depth of what we just talked about. And the council will have input on that also.
You're welcome to attend the meeting. Keep in mind, it is a public engagement meeting. It is, it won't be presented by any of you. You all can attend, but you would be audience members. It will be myself, Chief McDade and Chief Bolduc presenting where we're at and where we think we're going at this time. There's not a whole lot of data that's going to be available at this point as we're just starting. It is simply going to be, this is the plan as we see it at this point and what we think our metrics are going to be and what a public safety director actually does.
You good Neil?
Yeah, I'm good.
Through the Chair, can I make a comment? I just want to say, I've been working on this like a month and I believe I've talked to every employee at this point and I just want to give credit to the employees because as you all know, a month ago it started out pretty rocky. And I think 99% of the employees right now are positive. They're within 100% and they're really trying to investigate this effort. There's a couple people that aren't on board, but I think the majority are. It was actually a pleasure spending a lot of time over the fight upon the last month just to see what quality, what a great quality of people are out there. I'm looking forward to it, so thank you.
Thank you. Scott, you all set?
I am good, yes.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
No.
Okay. Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Peter, do you?